You can't, Jim.
That's ridiculous.
Okay.
Doug?
Evening. I'd like to call the order. The Plenary Board meeting is September 13th, 2016, to order. And, let's see, we don't have Paul here either, so...
So I will move that we table the minutes until our next meeting.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is approval not required plans received between August 31st and September 13th. Applicant Peter N. and Cynthia Storasta combined two lots into one at 83 Gunning Point. And let's see if we have that in front of us.
You do, and just because BSS isn't here tonight, Mr. Chairman, I can just describe the drawing to you. You can see that.
The applicant simply requests to eliminate this lot lying here. Which lot line can you show me?
The dotted one.
That little one right there, okay. That's...
So the guy was going away.
That isn't all that clear on this plan, Brian.
That's why I pointed it out to you.
Well, it doesn't look like they're creating another building lot here.
Not a subdivision by definition.
So I will move that we recommend, as an approval not required, the application of Peter N. and Cynthia Storasta to combine the two lots into one lot located at 83 Gunning Point without... Gunning Point Avenue without buildability...
La di da.
La di da.
I believe we're supposed to endorse. Is that the right...
About to endorse the plan.
Yes, endorse.
I just don't need to correct you. I'm just learning the language myself.
I thought I said endorse, didn't I?
You said recommend, so I just happened to remember it.
Thank you.
We have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Doug?
Excuse me for my... I have to recuse myself here, Jim.
Anybody need an agenda?
We all set? Continuation of a public hearing. Advocate Sheila Duarte-Andre, Andre Realty Trust, definitive plan to divide the existing single lot into two lots with associated roadway located at zero East Falmouth Highway map 321115A, Falmouth Engineering.
Mr. Chairman, I have a slight concern about the quorum, the four sitting members. And I believe it's in the best interest of the applicant to continue the hearing until your next meeting. If I could just ask, as a clarification, what is the sitting quorum as of the original... The original application?
You had six members.
Yeah, so if we... I just feel like six-member quorum would be a better place for us to be. To continue for two weeks for that is probably prudent.
Your choice.
So the motion would be to continue the hearing to Tuesday, September 27th, 6:30 here in the Town Hall at the request of the applicant.
And Mr. Chairman, is it possible on that night to vote? You have a policy where you have to waive... You have to waive your typical policy when you're making a presentation or information on that night. I was just curious if you were in the opposition available to vote on this.
I'm not going to comment on a policy issue.
Still, that all being said, I think it's in the best interest for us to continue.
We can add it to your agenda, and at the discretion of the board, you could waive your policy. We could have it on your agenda for you. It doesn't bind the board to waiving your policy or making a decision, but you would have that ability to do so.
I'll make my best effort that night that, uh, just to get it waived.
We understand why you're making the call, so that is be taken into consideration, but I'm not going to talk about a policy. We'll deal with it as we go along.
So then I will move that we continue the hearing until Tuesday, September 27th, at 6:30 in the Selectman's Meeting Room.
Right here.
And I guess I would say pending having full membership, or don't even have to add that.
No contingencies.
Okay.
You continue it to a time and place specific. So it's 6:30 Tuesday, 27th, here in Selectman's Meeting Room, Town Hall.
Period.
Period.
Okay, second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We're moving forward.
Also, Mr. Chairman, you may want to clarify that Sandwich Road, Dunkin' Donuts is not on your agenda tonight, and there will be no decision here tonight for that for anyone in the public who might be interested in that discussion.
All right, so if anyone noticed, the Sandwich Road Dunkin' Donuts is not on our agenda tonight. So there will not be any discussion or decision on it tonight. The next item on the agenda is committee reports, if I'm reading this correctly. Well, we're moving along fast, and I don't know if anyone's interested. I don't have to do it, but I do have a report planted on that machine, ready to show about an update of the EDIC solar project. It's about five minutes. Anyone interested in seeing it? Don't have to.
Sure.
It just is loaded up because I did it at 8:30 this morning, so I'll just jump in and do it again.
So this is your EDIC report, Jim?
It is.
Because we've got committee reports on there.
This is... That's why I'm bringing it up. So I just thought I'd use this opportunity to...
Good morning. This is Jim Fox of Falmouth EDIC. I'm the acting project manager for our project out of the Landville Solar Co. at the Landville. And we, as you can see here on our side, we have installed Citizens Energy as the project developer, and they're also providing the primary financing with Conti Construction as the general contractor to the site. And as you can see, we have a phone number down there that's texted my cellphone, and I've already received a phone call from a delivery truck at 1:30, we're going, that's where a company truck is parked, so I don't know if that would be a good idea or not, but we're moving forward. The other contractors of the site are Fishback and Moore, that's the electrical sub. Lawrence Lynch of Falmouth is doing a lot of the civil work, basically building the road. The power engineer is Dave Colombo. He's involved as the third-party oversight for the Landville, monitoring all procedures to protect the membrane of the Landville. Citroen Companies is providing the concrete, and Gamechanger Racks has a dual role. They're actually the vendor for the racks, but they're also the structural engineer of the racks. This is a view of the Falmouth graphic information system showing an aerial view of the Landville site. Here's the road coming in, is the road up to the area. This is the area you may know as the metal recycling area. There's an observation ramp here that's already standing there, and starting right here is where we're building our road where the trucks came access to the site. The road comes down along here like this, and goes up this ridge, and heads right up here, and we've got a couple turnarounds both here and up here so the big trucks can turn around. The trucks are limited to staying on just on this road. Here's the new road. The first fork at 50 feet is this heavy gravel. This is designed to clean any debris out of the trucks while coming and going, so nothing is brought into the site or taken off to the site. The next here, this is composted concrete laid on top of a very protective membrane that's put down first right on the grass, so it really makes sure that nothing will penetrate the Landville site. Here's a close-up view where you can see the erosion control barriers that totally surround the site. The two-and-a-half or so feet of composted concrete being laid down heavy, and there's a view of the membrane that's laid down first as they build the road. This is a fallback view from the same site, giving you a little better view again, there's the protective membrane around the entire site, and there's the membrane, uh, printed barriers, lift and membrane that's being laid on as the road being built. This shows us the large semi-trail truck that comes in and delivers the ballast to the site, and that truck is limited to staying up on the road we built, and then the ballasts are offloaded and brought down and dropped into the site by the general contractor. These vehicles here that travel along the Landville are... Have rubberized tread, so it's a very protective system. No regular tires are allowed on the site. They have to stay on the road. The next view here shows the racking system being installed, tying all the ballasts into place with these racks, and then actual panels that weigh about 45 pounds apiece being installed by the contractor. The next view here is the underside of the same panels. As you can see, this is like a giant erector set. These panels are laid in place along the aluminum racks, these are the tie-in all together, and the electrical system is all plugged in play. They're just connected to each other, and they keep hanging the entire array together, all the way through the whole thing, and down at the end of the array, there'll be an inverter that takes the collected power, they're all plugged in.
Uh-oh. It's working pretty well. Sorry. It's almost done. Please stop.
And converts it from...
I'll go back and finish it real quick.
Good morning. This is Jim Fox. The next view here is the underside of the same panels. As you can see, this is like a giant erector set. These panels are laid in place along the aluminum racks, these are the tie-in all together, and the electrical system is all plugged in play. They're just connected to each other, and they keep hanging the entire array together, all the way through the whole thing, and down at the end of the array, there'll be an inverter that takes the collected power, they're all plugged into, and converts it from direct current to off-aided current. And then all the converters or inverters are connected to a transformer, and the transformer steps up the power to the higher voltage that enables to go into the grid and be distributed throughout the Air Resources grid system. This is an underside view of the exact same panel. As you can see, these are wafer-thin type glass panels, almost like a printed circuit printed on glass with a very lightweight aluminum frame. Each panel only weighs about 40 pounds, and they're tied in structurally with the aluminum frame, and they're all bolted together. This is a fallback view of the same area. This is the northern array, the most northern section of the field is being built. You can see it's about... Most of the panels have been installed on this section. This is the southern end of that same array. You can clearly see all the panels that are all delivering and dropped off on site, ready for the contractors to lay up and then install. So it's almost like a military operation. We have different teams laying up and installing it, and, you know, I visit this site every week, and it's just amazing to see the progress that happens every week. And a few weeks, once they're all installed, the visible work will tide out because there's a tremendous amount of electrical work that will happen in place, and you really... We really won't see much changes on an actual report. So this is probably going to be the most dramatic report we're going to present of the whole project. The first month is when all the activity really takes place. And this is the southern array, just the underside of that road that we showed up, we showed earlier, where the racks have not been installed, just the ballast is installed yet, the racks haven't been all tied in. But that should be, by the time we record, next month, these will all be done, have panels all on, and we won't see any more changes, because like I said, the majority of the work is going to be electrical work, tying everything together. The project is on time and on schedule and on budget, and we should be... The goal is December 1st to be ready to plug in, and everything's going well. And we will give another report again next month, but you won't have this amount of changes. This is going to be probably the most actual report of the whole thing, and thank you very much for your time. If anyone has some questions, feel free to contact me. Thank you very much.
Wow. So that's $700,000 a year for 25 years.
Nice.
No investment.
Nice.
It's a great project. It's going well.
What's your cut?
I wish I had one. I totally volunteer about three years of time. I actually had to... I was working three years ago. I was working with a company that was interested. I had to resign from them and make sure I didn't have any contact, and they didn't even bid it, and I... It was made clear that I had to. There was a conflict, and so I decided it was best to... It interests to work just for the town. It's been a great project. I've really enjoyed it.
Thank you.
And now Citizens is actually having me talk to other towns about helping them get other projects. So it's just so far, so good. It's going on great.
I do have one question about it.
Go ahead.
On houses now, it's common that they use these microinverters on each connection, so that if one panel is partially shaded, it doesn't hurt the whole panel or hurt the whole string? Do you know if they're using that?
Yeah. Every single panel is an identifiable device on the computer. It all... It's like a digital module. So if anything runs with one panel, the computer tells us there's a problem with that panel, and it shifts things around and takes care of it. So if a chunk of snow, if you would... If someone would lay a shirt on top of a panel, they would know about it because the computer would say something's wrong.
Well, they'll know, but I'm wondering if it...
It reroutes it, rebalances it, keeps going, but somebody goes out and fixes it too. It's extremely sensitive and detailed feedback on computer.
Do they have a plan where they're going to go out and pull the snow off of them, or...
No. It's the slope and blackness and temperature are designed that hopefully the sun heats them up and...
They just clean themselves?
And they... It melts off, and if it... During the winter, the sun isn't there that much, so they just wait. If it... If we get swamped with four feet of snow, and they have to, they might, but it's not in the plan. It's generally designed for this climate, this area, this latitude, the slope, it's all... They've got lots of these things. They've already figured that all out.
Yeah. We've never had a problem with the snow. It does just slide off. On your head? You've got to watch it.
Okay, well, thank you for allowing me to do that under committee reports. Has anybody else got a committee report?
I have one question. Do you know if the contractors are union, non-union? Is it a rated job as far as the payroll?
Yes. I think... I think they have to be union wage.
Such a rated job.
Straight-rated job. We... One contractor is from Falmouth. You know, Lawrence Lynch is the one doing... We pushed hard to get a local contractor, and they're the only ones that are really qualified to, under the union rules, and had the right people in... The beauty of it is, is we don't have to do any of that. The way I bid this thing is that responsibility always goes on Citizens Energy. So they have to do all the procurement. They have to follow all the rules. It's all their gig, and we just collect rent.
Okay, thank you.
That's the way we structured it. But yes, they're all big contractors. Fishback and Moore is a giant union contractor, so is Conti. Yes, to answer your question, they are.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else in the other committees?
No.
All right. Thanks for indulging me. Yes?
I just have one question for the board. Is your joint committee with the Conservation Commission on Resiliency Issues, they're proposing to the board that you meet with them on Thursdays at 3:30? And I don't know if that was convenient for the members who were on that subcommittee. I believe it's Pat and Bob. So is Thursday at 3:30 a good time?
This week?
Any week. Because right now, Wednesday nights, I believe, they meet, and on Tuesday nights, you meet. So they were looking at a Thursday afternoon during the day, if that's a convenient time.
Yeah. Yeah.
I can probably do it, but not this week.
Okay. When you can. If you can get those Thursdays that you might be available, we can then schedule your first meeting.
Okay. And I had volunteered for that, but I will likely be leaving. But Mr. Cool also was interested in that.
Right. It would be good to have a member of the board selecting that.
I volunteered for it on that, too.
He's already taken a lot of assignments.
Somebody else is on that, though.
Okay. So Thursdays at 3:30, if you let me know your availability, I'll try to set that up for you. That was Paul Dryer's request to bring in Wood's whole group for that computer simulation of the sea level rise issues.
Yeah.
So that would hopefully be their first meeting. Thanks.
Any other committee reports?
Well, the LCP doesn't really have one because we haven't met since August yet.
Yeah.
We're meeting tomorrow.
John, how about this CPC? How's that go?
Good. Getting ready to review what's going to be presented to town meeting for 2017.
Attendance at the All Island Plenary Board Martha's Vineyard Committee meeting. We have a date set for that, Pat?
Well, it had been set.
You missed accessory... Oh, accessory apartment bylaw. Oh, boy, jump right over that. Excuse me. Do we have an update, Brian?
The board members at your last meeting had a discussion with regards to the imposition of a cap. So what I've done for you is I've at least, and this should be in your package, it's actually the start of the three articles, technical articles. And you'll see down there under the last proposed article, you would essentially amend... You have a building permit moratoria section of the zoning bylaw, and you've used it for turbines and for other measures. We would insert the language there. The only important missing piece is the number. But that's the way we would approach it. We essentially moritoriate for the calendar year '17. So let's say we bring this to the town meeting in April, then you would have X number of permits for the remainder of that calendar year. I mean, for that calendar year '17.
Sort of a pilot program?
Sort of a pilot program. If there's a concern that this would chain react, there would be a safeguard or a fail-safe that only X number of permits could issue in that calendar year. There is a sunset provision here. In other words, after the end of the calendar year, or I'm sorry, at the November 2017 town meeting, you would have to make a decision as to whether or not you were going to extend it. Or see it again in April of '18. But I guess the key questions are for the board's considerations prior to the next closing of the warrant, which is in early January, is do you want to do it? And if you do, what is that cap? And then what is the duration of that cap? So here's some information here to at least think about, bring it back to your discussion. I thought you were going to have... Or you're intending to have, I think, a more town-wide type discussion. Let me go from there. I sense that you're not going to reach a conclusion tonight. The number, we're throwing 50, we're throwing 40, we're doing this and doing that. I think a little further reflection and discussion on that number needs to come forward.
But if I read it, if I remember correctly, we're talking... Let's say we did 25, but it's only in effect for May, June, July, August, September, October, and November.
Right.
That's not very... That's not bad. And it also is excluding all the ones that are pre-existing and are looking to be coming in that have already been built.
Well, if they're coming in for an amnesty, you see it except as provided in that first section, that language there. That's the amnesty section.
The bylaw, so it's a different...
Right. So if you're coming in to bring yourself into compliance with building code and health code and fire code and whatnot, then you pass go. You can... They don't count. These would... This would be...
New ones.
That number, that 25 or 50, whatever that number is, would be new ones.
Not including amnesty.
Not including amnesty. For those who lack the requisite permits or have code violations.
Myself, I'm not in favor of any cap, but I would gladly go along with whatever moves this thing forward and listen to other people, because I just... The main important thing is to move it forward. So we don't have to decide tonight, but that's something we're talking about, yeah? Okay?
Yeah.
I think I've heard other people express that same view, so...
So you have something in front of you. It's always easier sometimes to look at it, go back to the bylaw, see how it fits in, see how it works, and think about a number of derision.
So basically, we're not changing the accessory bylaw draft. We're changing another bylaw.
This... Correct. This would be a separate article that if town meeting so decides, could impose a cap.
Right.
So it'd be, do you want to have it? The first article is, do you want it in residential zones? And the second article is, do you want it in agricultural zones? And the third article is, do you want to put a cap on it? So they'll have the choice, A, B, C. Right. It'll be their decision.
So we're basically giving them... So we're basically giving them chances to, we don't have to amend it, we're giving them incremental steps.
The planning board may decide that, okay, we want to see this in residential and agricultural zones and we don't want a cap. But ultimately, it'll be town meeting who decides. You'll have a recommendation, but they'll have the choice. Bring in one article, you get two amendments. I don't suggest you do that. That way, they, if they don't want to have it in ag zones, they're not in ag zones. If they want a cap or don't want a cap, they decide.
Any further discussion from anybody on that?
The only other information you received was from a local attorney who offers her comments regards some of the language from your August 17th draft, included in your package for your consideration. I think if they take the time to provide you with some thoughtful comments, take a look, you can discuss it at your next meeting as to whether or not you want to incorporate her language. As opposed to attorneys, or they're trying to tighten up the language so they can be more precise or find a legal...
Do you have a copy of that August 17th?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a copy of that recent draft?
I don't have a copy of that draft on me, but I can email it to you.
I have a trouble understanding the requirements, paragraph four. After 20,000 square feet, I would suggest cutting unless the principal dwelling is the requirement. Is she referring to the new accessory apartment bylaw?
Yeah, she's referring to the draft August 17th in her first sentence. So I can find out. I thought the board might have a... I don't recall the 20,000 square feet.
No, she's referring to what used to be four, which is now five.
I'll go back and take a look for you and clarify that for you.
Yeah, this is the August 17th.
Oh, right, having to do with the septic. Okay.
So take, take a look at those comments and I know this will get it more, more vetting, I believe. This might be something people here tonight who might want to just address the board, too.
On this issue, is there someone in the audience who would like to address us?
Mr. Chairman.
Please identify yourself.
Thank you. Dr. Virginia Malia La, precinct five, and I've been following this issue with great interest in the newspaper. Yes, if you could set that up there, and I'm actually gonna undo this. And so I wanted to first thank the board for tackling this issue. I know that it's got lots of aspects to it and it's been a mean, the long conversation that it has, but the fact that you and the zoning board have been giving thought to accessory apartments, I think is a very worthy thing to do for the town. I do have some thoughts I want to share. I'm here speaking for myself, but I'm bringing six years of experience on the Water Quality Management Committee. And so when I saw the headline, "A Little Lot Size Eliminated", I decided I should come and at least share some thoughts. So I prepared a couple of pieces of information here to discuss. I actually have three different things I'm gonna talk about and then I'm gonna sort of weave them together into major points that I want to make.
Excuse me.
Can you see that?
I just want to remind you, we've actually, we're gonna continue tonight, but we've made it a policy that everything now comes, has to be put on the projector so we can show on a screen so people can see it at home.
At home.
And that's our new policy going forward, so the next time, make sure you do that. Because we're giving you a little leeway here, but that's our new policy.
Okay. I didn't know that. So the first aspect that I think needs to be brought into the discussion is the comprehensive wastewater management plan process that the town is engaged in. In 2010, this was the plan. Everything in green was to have sewers and it was gonna be a $600 million project. There was a review team established. Doug was on it, I was, Matt Patrick, Pierre Boyer, and we concluded that, several things. First of all, this area is not densely enough populated and really doesn't need to be soured anyway, so that the planning area now starts where this black line is. And this is the current area that's on the table for sewer-ing. But from out of the town and from a number of people who were involved in alternative ways of treating nitrogen, there was a clear signal from, from the town meeting and then ultimately the voters with what we call Article 17 in 2011, that we look at also at alternatives for ways to manage the nitrogen, the excess nitrogen that's in each one of these estuaries. The town has 15 estuaries in all that have an exceedance of the load of nitrogen. So the rest is going all the way around, but the current study is basically about 60% of the town. These blue lines are the water sheds and this is a very important line. This is a dividing line for 10-year travel time of groundwater. If you're south of that line, the nitrogen from the septic systems will end up in these estuaries within 10 years. If you're north of that line, and the farther north, the longer the travel time, the nitrate obviously has much, much farther to travel and it has a greater chance to be uptaken by wetlands, ponds, streams, and just the general vegetation in the area where it's discharged. So development in this area, greater development in this area, has lesser impact on the estuaries than here. When I saw this headline that said, "No Lot Minimum Limit", I wanted to look at where are our small lots and where is the major impact on the estuaries that would push us towards sewers are the only solution. They're enormously expensive, they cost a lot to operate, and they're very energy consumptive. So I asked the GIS department to do a couple things. So I'm now moving to my next point. So this is all parcels that are 10,000 square feet or less in the town. There are also a few up here in Silver Beach and a few up here in McGansett, but the bulk of them are in this, this area and some around what we call Pinecrest area, Jenkins Pond. As you know, we have soured Maravista up to where this line is and we have soured about half of Falmouth Heights. The other piece of Falmouth Heights, the groundwater actually flows to Vineyard Sound, so it does not, does not affect inner harbor even. So you look at the density of these very small lots and they are very close to the estuaries. You have Great Harbors, you're Shorewood, the area around Mill Pond, just north of Green Pond. This is Antler Shores and then down here into Seaco Shores. So if you had no limit, no minimum lot size, all of these lots come into play for greater use and more bedrooms and apartments. And it will affect these ponds to the point where using the agriculture or the inlet wiring makes it unlikely that we would be able to not sewer. So then I asked, okay, what if the minimum lot size were 15,000? And so everything that's in green is a lot that is 15,000 square feet or less and it would not be eligible for having an accessory apartment. And when you remove this potential for growth here and around Jenkins Pond and up here... Obviously, it'd be easier if it were a deck.
Yep.
Another reason, sorry about that. So up here in McGansett, we have Silver Beach is soured, but there are more areas down into Herring River, which is old Silver Beach. So if you have lots with a minimum size of 15,000 that are not eligible for this accessory apartment, you have effectively taken, taken away the development potential and the nitrogen loading from the significant areas of the town. So you've protected your estuaries from this extra load that you are, that's currently, under your current bylaw or draft, that are currently going to be eligible for accessory apartments. Sewers are not popular in this town and so I believe that if this bylaw passes without a minimum lot size, you're basically sealing our future to, we will have to sewer this entire, this entire area. There's another point to be made about the 15,000 square feet. One of the tools in the toolbox for managing nitrogen are what they call innovative alternative systems. They are basically add-ons to your septic system so that you're able to teach, treat the nitrogen on a lot-by-lot basis. You need the space to do it. And so 15,000 square feet and above does work.
Are you aware that our bylaw draft requires the alternate systems to be in place on anything if it's not on the sewer that's already in the bylaw?
I'm not aware of that provision at this point.
It is.
But, but, but I can tell you from our experience, we're installing 20 IA's systems in West Falmouth and we are having a great deal of difficulty on these very tiny lots. And so I, I'm saying that if your lot is 15,000 or more, you'll be able to do it.
We actually, in part of our planning, actually reviewed the same issue a couple of weeks ago. And we asked the GI to do the exact same thing on a 10,000 square foot lot basis. And our thought process was, as long as we're having, that if they're not on the sewer, that they have to have a denitrification system, we're still protecting the area. So that's why we're moving forward. We're not saying that you can put them in unless they have, either they're on a sewer or they have a denitrification system. That is, that is the way the bylaw is and always has been. So I think we're kind of coming from the same direction.
Well, I'm, I'm very glad to hear that provision. I somehow didn't see that. I mean, I've...
It wasn't on the headlines, but it's in the, it's in the fine print.
It's in the bylaw. So that, that is very good. You will find, though, that, that it is extremely difficult to do on very small lots.
I'm hoping it is.
And you will still have nitrogen, even though with the IA systems, we're getting down to about 10 milligrams per liter. We're not down to the three that's, that's at the sewer wastewater treatment plant. So there is still some nitrogen from, I'm just saying, they're, they're not, they're not perfect. I want to make one other point, which is just sort of a planning issue. If you allow intensification of apartments in these areas that, that all these little green squares, you're, you're really creating more traffic in areas that are already quite congested. Whereas if you concentrate on the rest of the town where you have 15,000 square feet and more, you're basically allowing the kind of accessory apartment that we need, but you're putting it in an area of town that is not as congested in traffic, has a greater travel time for the nitrogen so that there's, there's less of an impact on the aquifer as a whole. And so then I did the math. How many parcels might that be if you take this out? And just sort of in round numbers, you still have 10,000 parcels that are more than 15,000 square feet. If even one tenth of that, that's a thousand new accessory apartment units. That's a lot of units. So, so I really think that, that having a minimum lot size is a very useful tool that screens out a lot of problems and gets development in an area and meets a need without increasing the traffic. I'll make one final point and that is, along with the little pond sewer surface area, when we defined the line, we required by the loan that we received that there was a cap on the number of bedrooms. And I presume you all know that. The cap is four bedrooms. So however you compute it, within the sewer area, there can be no more than four. So those are...
We know and understand that. That's part of the process.
So, could I just make a point about the, the way this is worded? This is not the most current one, but, so, "The total number of bedrooms on the lot shall not exceed four when the lot contains less than 20,000 square feet. If the lot is within a water resource protection or coastal pond overlay district, the total number of bedrooms shall not exceed one per 10,000 square feet of lot area unless both the principal dwelling and the accessory apartment are connected to the municipal sewer system or an onsite septic system with enhanced nitrogen removal approved by the Board of Health." So I think that it could be helpful in the sense that it could introduce some of these systems just by the fact that if people want the upgrade, and if they want the apartment, they're gonna have to do the upgrade. So maybe that's a good thing. I don't know.
I think you've, you've hit on a lot of good suggestions. I, I think we're closing in on a bylaw that is workable. But I do think that if you have no lot limit, you put so many parcels onto the potential list.
Well, Virginia, we don't have no lot limit, okay? There isn't a, they have to have, there's a 20% lot coverage ratio. If they're not on the, on the sewer system, they have to meet Title V with, you know, the room for their four-bedroom system and a reserve. And theoretically, if you do that, there's a functional lot limit on the size that comes in. And what we're trying to do is just, not to make so many rules so this never happens, but just, we've got 1,000 rules in place already, just playing within the rules. And we think that the fact, we've discussed this a lot, had Brian do the exact same report you're presenting to us now. We looked at it two weeks ago. We took that into consideration and we, we understand this. But we, we're afraid if you put too many rules on this thing, it's not gonna happen. And we, we feel that there's enough, and there's one other point you have to understand. What you're suggesting is not in line with our local comprehensive plan. We do not want to grow out further. We have decided that the growth that needs to be in town needs to be where our highways are, our bus routes are, the public transportation is, and we think all the growth should be in our village centers. And that what you're suggesting will push more sprawl out further and, and make our, stretch our town out further. And we are, we're understanding of the cap and we would actually like to see the growth in closer to town.
Yeah, the cap is just a functional thing. So many permits per year.
Right.
Okay, so it's, it's not...
No, but the, the law on the sewers about how, where our net growth is, we, we understand that as well.
Nutrient management.
Nutrient management.
The accessory apartments are going into houses that are already there. So, so it's not necessarily more sprawl. The sprawl is already there. It's, it's whether you have more people living in that particular, that particular structure. I realize there, there are trade-offs here, but, but I do think that if we end up with more nitrogen in these peninsulas south of that 10, 10-year travel time, then, you know, all the work we've been trying to do to avoid sewer-ing these peninsulas is going to go out the window and we might as well just...
Well, our intention is it has to have a denitrification system. In fact, our cap is even greater than yours. Because we're using 10,000 square feet per bedroom. So yours is actually even more generous than ours.
Well, I will have to do that calculation and I, I thought I see, I see your point.
I think if you do the math, you'll see we're there.
But just remember that the IA systems aren't zero, okay? There's still nitrogen from those IA systems. The best ones are down around 10 at this point.
John, wait.
Go ahead, John.
Just a question for you. One of the things that we've wrestled with a little bit is we aren't sure how many people are gonna apply for these permits. Do you have a thought on that?
Do I know how many people are going to apply?
Any idea? What, what? Because we don't know. Obviously, we don't know.
No, I understand.
So we're wrestling, should we put a, a limit on it the first year? 25, 50?
You're wrestling with whether this might be too successful. That's, that's the reason for a discussion, is the cap gonna be 25 permits or 40 permits or so on and so forth. I have no personal input at this point as to how many people are going to... I have no personal input at this point as to how many people are going to, to do that. You've already, judging by your conversation a little earlier today, set aside that the ones that are sort of going to be grandfathered. Well, you used the words amnesty. So they're already there, but they're finally getting on the books. What we're talking about is how many new ones would there be?
Correct.
And I think, my honest calculation would be, I don't think the homeowners across this town have yet digested the fact of what their potential is for this bylaw. They're still waiting for it to sort of be sorted out, you know? Am I in the pot or am I out of the pot? But then, to me, it appears to me to be a revenue source. And so I think it will be relatively popular, and that's why I'm worried about these peninsulas.
So, have you another point? So another point that I think important is, even though these are in estuary areas, a lot of the people in these areas could really benefit by the accessory apartment bylaw, and also...
Benefit in what way?
Financially.
Well...
Like, say, for instance, in the Little Pond sewer service area, we've asked these people to pay for these upgrades. We're trying to give them some tools to maybe have these seniors stay in their houses a little more safely. That's one thing. Another thing is, I'm guessing there are quite a few already existing apartments in these areas that we'd like to see brought into compliance and brought up to code safety-wise. I'd hate to exclude them from that just because of that minimum lot size. You know, there's a big safety issue here where I feel like this has been kind of an underground thing that's been kind of, you know, we've been turning our heads to it and not trying to enforce it because we, maybe we know that our existing bylaw is so stringent that we've been kind of letting it go.
The reason I think that people saw it as so stringent was because they had to be, I'm not using the right word, registered in perpetuity.
That's one thing, but the, the minimum lot size is also a killer for most people. And, you know, even on a lot that appears to be a good-sized lot, you still, you don't meet today's requirement. So I just think it's very exclusionary, and I don't, I don't know if it's fair.
If they don't have, you know, they have their 40,000-square-foot lots to put the four bedrooms in if they're not on the sewer system. That's the bylaw.
Or they already exist.
Or they put the D-Nite system.
Or they put a D-Nite system in.
Or they put a D-Nite system.
But, so your question is, you're saying that our D-Nite protection is not enough because it's too weak. Other than that, we're in agreement, basically. If the D-Nite was zero, you wouldn't be here tonight.
I, I think that that's probably, yes, provided you can put the D-Nites on.
But that's always been on our rule.
And many of them are going to be excluded just by the, the size of the lot, and the engineer is going to say, "Sorry, you can't do it."
Because, remember, they have to do, for the, they may have a two-bedroom house, but they got to have a four-bedroom system with, with a 20-foot setback from the structure with the full basement, 10, 10-foot setbacks from all the property lines, and a reserve with the exact same setbacks. And we've taken that into consideration, and we haven't really done the math, but it's really, really difficult to squeeze, the little lots you're concerned about are going to be disqualified by rules that are already in place.
All right.
And that's why we're not, we, we understand exactly where you're coming from. Obviously, with Doug sitting on our board, he's made it very, very clear.
Great.
And I, I believe we've, we're...
You think you've addressed it in another way.
We have addressed it in another way, and I think if you had seen everything and all the discussion, the only point you have us at is maybe the D-Nite isn't as good as we thought it was. But other than that, I think we're on the same page.
Okay. Well, I, I know you're concerned about water quality, and I definitely wanted to bring, bring my thoughts. If this bylaw passes, it will definitely change the calculation for what's going to be the loading into these estuaries. There's already a loading on file. The town has a deadline of December 2019 to file an update. I'm not actually sure how they're going to deal with this because you don't really know how many people are going to take part.
If anything, if any of them are implemented, it's going to be a net reduction in nitrogen. Because right now, they're on Title V that's not doing anything. And if they want to implement this, and if they're in a coastal pond overlay or a recharge area, they're going to have to put the D-Nite system in. So it's actually going to improve our situation.
Well, each, each IA that goes in will improve our current situation, but the way the state looks at it is they look at the total load to, to the watershed, lower watershed or upper watershed.
And they don't give credit for IA's in place?
And so what, what you've done, the load is currently calculated, one house per parcel and 2.1 people per house, and so, so the formula that generated how many million gallons were going to come out of here, that, that formula is going to have to be...
But all those houses could now be four bedrooms. If they're on the sewer right now, they can already go to four bedrooms.
That's correct.
So we've taken that into consideration, too. What we're saying, though, we're saying they could have four bedrooms, but if we put this 15,000-square-foot lot, 80% of them can't call the extra two bedrooms an accessory bylaw. And that's the, that's where the other flip of the coin that you're talking about, I think we're on the same page, but looking at it from a different side.
Okay. Well, I, I appreciate the chance to have the discussion.
And we're probably going to hear this again, so it gets us more prepared for the next time.
Great.
Virginia, this is for my own information, because there's 5,000 square feet difference between 10,000 and 15,000 square feet. When you, excuse me, when you said you need a certain amount of square feet on a lot to be able to accommodate an IA system, what is the minimum? Because...
Well, each one turns out to be individually engineered, and it's because there are just so many utilities, driveways, huge trees...
Shape of the house, every little...
Shape of the house, where the plumbing is. So you can't, can't say that. We, we, it's been Houdini to, to do it in West Falmouth. We did get the 20 in, but, but it hugely ran up the cost. And so it's, it's a consideration that IA's are, are out there, but they don't treat as well as we need them to treat, and, and they're, they're hard to install because of the logistics.
So you think that 15,000 square feet takes care of...
So that's why I'm concerned about small lots. Now, you know, I don't know the deciding board, if someone comes in with their lot, but, you know, who looks at the engineering and says, "Nope"?
Board of Health. We're not waiving any issues. We're not waiving any zoning issues or any board of health issues.
Okay.
We're leaving all the protections that are in place there, and we don't want to change that. So we're not saying, that, that is why we're not so concerned about some of these issues because we honestly feel that there's a lot of protection in place already, especially because it's a 10,000 square feet per bedroom if you're...
Yes.
You know, that's a 40,000-square-foot lot. There's no 40,000-square-foot lots, a few, but there's very few in that area.
Right.
And so our position is, we thought that the rules that are already in place are adequate.
And I certainly will, will look at that carefully. I may completely agree with you.
Can I ask her another question?
Please do. This is...
What is the current expectation of a IA system percentage-wise?
The ones that are approved by DEP are 19 milligrams per liter. The ones that you're testing in West Falmouth are able to get down to 10. Some are promising more, but anyway, needs more monitoring, and then we've got to prove it to DEP. The costs were in the $20,000 to $30,000 range to install each one of those. So there are enough people in West Falmouth who are interested that, that we hope to have a second round, so we have, we have 20 people that we've tested. 10 of those people put in tight tanks, so they don't even have a new system. They have tight tanks. And it's because it's a totally seasonal house. It's only used for a couple of months, so tight tank, the Board of Health will allow that. And there's a restriction that is, that gets converted to year-round use, they have to have Title V. Have I answered your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Well, anything else? Thank you very much. This is a fascinating topic.
Well, yeah, I mean, I hope, thank you for coming. We needed to have this conversation. We, we have taken it in consideration, but we haven't had someone with your expertise in front of us before on this. It's kind of just what we, except for Doug. Doug has been part of it.
She's pulling ahead of me now.
But anyways...
So, so actually, what I'm going to do as an exercise is, is look at the restrictions that you're using and, and see...
See how it overlaps with what you're talking...
See how it overlaps and how it comes out of the bottom line.
Well, our thoughts that we've already addressed this issue.
Okay. I honestly believe that, that none of us wants to seal the fate of the town, that we have to...
Absolutely not.
So, so we want to go in with our eyes open.
We were just trying to take advantage of where we already sewed.
Yep.
And they already have the right to put in four bedrooms.
Right.
And so we're just saying, okay, we're letting them put a stove in the house and, and call it two and two.
Right.
And that's all we're doing.
Well, but you will end up with more people in that, in that area.
We understand that. But we also, part of our local comprehensive plan, have identified the areas in the center of villages as that's exactly where we want to grow.
Yeah, yeah.
So we're trying to balance those two things, and I thought, that was our intention. We're, we're thinking the same lines, whether the policy works or not, we're, we'll, we'll find out.
A robust public policy discussion.
Yeah, it's great.
Absolutely.
Absolutely great.
Thank you for the opportunity.
So, next time, let's get it on the screen, so we can really go at it. So the people at home can see it. That's why we do it from now on.
I understand. That's, that's a good policy. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Could I mention one other thing? You're going to review to see what the impact could be.
I'm going to read your latest draft.
So while you're doing that, could you look at if we limit it to 50 a year? I mean, over 10-year period, that's 500.
That's 500.
If we limit it to 25 a year, that's 250.
Right.
Give, could, maybe you could give us some feedback on what the impact would be, projected impact could be.
Obviously, it could happen anywhere in the entire town.
Right.
18,000 parcels, picture...
But we've discussed not having any cap.
Yes.
And having a cap to start off with.
Yes. You might also think about one other thing, and that is the amnesty parcels that are going to sort of be grandfathered wherever it is they are and however they are. You don't really know how many they are, there are of, of those. And, you know, there are all sorts of wild guesses. But you might think that the first year would be dedicated to cleaning those up before you embark on new ones. That's just about it.
Well, we've already passed an amnesty bylaw.
I know.
And then how many people took advantage of it?
Exactly.
So we're not really worried about that.
The one who forced the issue...
Right.
...in the first place.
So we, we offered that out there and nothing happened.
So you think with this new bylaw that they'll come forward?
Well, I guess there was one point I left out. The, the amnesty bylaw still has the reporting and, and recording of the income restriction on it. When we take that off, that has not been tested. So that is still out there. And we're actually hoping that, you know, if people have already built 50 of these things and they're using them anyways, we already have the problem.
We already have it. Oh, there's no question.
There's already there. Now, now we're just going to deal with it.
Yeah. Anything else?
Oh, this is great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Glad you can skip over that one.
That's all good because...
No, that's a very dynamic...
Those are the types of questions you're going to get at town meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't want to deal with that at a surprise at town meeting.
I think that's very good for Silicon Valley Ella to come in and offer her comments.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
I thought we had nothing else to discuss on that issue.
Oh.
Any other things on the accessory bylaw that anyone else like to bring up?
Yeah, I just have...
Please step up and identify yourself.
It's not why I came, but my name is Chris Shanahan Eagle Drive. From her map, I think it's kind of really a stretch, I think, would be improving the nitrogen system with IA systems when you're putting 10 IA systems. I mean, the horse has already left the barn. You're just kicking the can down the road thinking, they're putting 10 of those systems in those areas, it's going to resolve the existing water quality problem. The IA systems that I'm familiar with only reduce the nitrogen by 50%, so even if you did 100% of the houses all converted and went to IA systems, you still have a water quality problem.
And we'd have to use other measures to do the rest.
Excuse me?
We'd have to use other measures to do the rest, like...
Right, sewer. I think you've got to do sewer and the inlets is the only solution.
Inlet widening and oysters and some other ideas that they're working on.
Right, but I, I don't think 10 or 20, this, this IA system thing is just kicking the can down the road at this moment.
Thank you.
Would you like to take general correspondence out of order?
Wait, someone here?
I think the gentleman here is, is from Eagle Drive. That's his correspondent, so that way we can get him.
Okay, yeah, so we held this up before.
Yeah, I've read the letter.
Okay.
Strong argument about the comparison to the North Falmouth project.
So, should we read the letter?
It's quite long.
Quite long.
Have you not?
I've read it.
Thanks for the board.
I read it today.
Sorry, I tried to keep...
So the purpose really, just for procedural purposes, so the board knows, is that if you're willing to entertain this request that would require reopening of the hearing on application to modify, modify the decision, and the purpose here really is to give guidance so we don't run into another cash trail situation where someone applies, they go through the process, but the board is disinclined.
So, but what I would like to see before we talk, talk about this, I think I know where Eagle Drive is, but this would be a really good opportunity if we could see where this parcel is that we're talking about.
Okay, you know where Putter Drive is?
Yeah, this is up by the golf club.
And up by the fourth, I think it's the fourth fairway up there by the country club?
Right.
It's in that vicinity.
The Town Country Club, right?
The Town Country Club.
And before we go forward, I did the framing at Mr. Shanahan's house. I don't know if you consider that a conflict. We're not like ongoing golf friends or anything, which is, it's just a business.
I think as long as you notify us about that, that's okay. So basically, he's asking for, to remove, actually, he's basically going to open the hearing up to have another discussion on it.
Correct.
And we're not going to decide this tonight. We're going to...
You would, you would then have to forgive the condition for the subdivision. It's a condition that applies to the entire subdivision.
So we don't have to decide that tonight? The only decision tonight is whether you reopen the hearing to hear this issue?
I think the guidance to, to Mr. Shanahan and, and to, to us is whether the board is inclined to take a, a look at this, unlike you did in your previous decisions on other subdivisions under similar circumstances. Mr. Shan, Shanahan is always free to petition and reopen this hearing. I think it's always important to at least, you know, give some guidance. It will require, you know, the fee and the notice of the butters and whatnot, so it's, it's a, it's a process. But that's the, the purpose of our discussion here tonight. Not to weigh the evidence, remember, this is a public hearing. It's evidentiary, and it's adjudicatory. So you would need to reserve your comments and thoughts on the specific details of that letter to the hearing process. Purpose is to let Mr. Shanahan know, okay, what's, you know, I think, okay, you've got a case, and why don't you come forward?
So our policy has basically been, if you're in a resource protection area, you want to do this, you have to...
We want to, we want to reexamine the 2005 decision for this subdivision. See, is what, is what the request is, right?
I think I have to review. I haven't seen that, so I'd have to review that to have any opinion. The 2005 decision.
Well, well, none of us were there, where he's asking for an opportunity to come and talk to us again.
I was, but I don't remember enough about it.
Is it, is it, does everyone in the development have to have this system?
I don't know. I think, I believe so, yes.
Yes.
How many homes are there?
Nine.
Nine.
Nine?
No, that's, that's Paul's own lane. Uh, there's, there's, um...
There's five.
This subdivision, it's an eight-lot subdivision.
And are they all built out except yours?
Oh, mine's already built, it was built four years ago.
Okay.
Let's hold off, we're having discussion back and forth, I don't want to do that. So the question is, are we going to open this hearing up? If that's really the question?
I, I think at least give it an indication, you know, okay, you've got a case here, why don't we move forward to a hearing level? Right. Again, it's neither binding on you...
Right, I'm open-minded on it.
Or binding on Mr. Shanahan.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, he's always free to petition you. This is a process where you can get some indication where we're heading here. Because you just can't forgive it for one lot, uh, as an administrative procedure here. You have to actually reopen the hearing, forgive it for the subdivision.
I'm always willing to listen.
Pat?
Okay, we can listen, but this is in a stabilization area for Boren's Pond.
We don't have all that fun of it. Hold on.
Again...
Don't, any, has to be truly...
I'm just taking it from the letter, I don't know.
Okay.
So, stabilization areas have to have some form of mitigation to be able to do away with the IA requirements, do they not, or am I misunderstanding?
That section of the zoning bylaw is less restrictive than high-quality areas, if you mandate these EISs, if there are other public improvements associated in the vicinity.
Okay.
But that's evidentiary that you would have to bring in at the, at a hearing level.
If we were going to change anything.
Going to change it, yeah.
Okay. I'm, I'd be willing to rehear it.
Okay.
But I think there must have been good reason that the board made the decision that it did back then to, so... Since nobody else has heard it.
Yeah.
Go along with whatever the board recommends here.
So...
Whether we're going to open it up...
It was only four years ago, so you probably did hear it.
It was 2005.
Oh, no, that's the original development.
Yeah.
Correct, 2005, so this is my 16th year on the board, but nobody on the board now was here back then, except for me, and I just don't recall. I mean, that was 11 years ago, folks.
So do we need a motion to, um, no?
No, no, the, the, the indications are, are clear, so we'll, uh, we'll go from here. Okay, always free to petition you.
Okay.
And we'll bring it in.
I, I guess, I guess that would be the guidance for this... Right, but we're going to want detailed presentation, we're going to, you know, and they may end up in the same place, we don't know, but we don't want to make a decision before we hear it.
Okay.
That's...
Okay, then we'll move forward on that guidance?
We will listen.
Okay, we will move forward on that guidance?
Okay, so that was correspondence.
Okay, a couple questions.
Thanks for your patience.
I'm listening.
No coming back, okay?
I just have a couple of questions. Uh, my first question is, is I originally filed this, I'm not speaking for my neighbors, but Mr. Curry is now saying I have to speak for my neighbors on this issue. I mean, that's really a personal issue for me. I know some of my neighbors probably feel the same way, but I don't, I'm not their attorney to speak for them, so...
Make sure I can explain the procedural niceties to you, but you, you'd speak for yourself as the applicant, but it affects the entire subdivision as well, so...
Okay.
We are going to open up the whole subdivision here.
You don't have to speak for anybody but yourself.
It affects everybody in the subdivision.
Right.
But you can, you're free to speak just as your own, for your own interests, but it affects the entire subdivision's decision, is what I said.
And the one other question is, how, how am I going to get an answer on what area it is? Because I asked Mr. Curry, is it a stabilization area if it's not defined as high intensity? And when I met with him, he said it has to be then, yes, and tonight he said he didn't know, so how do I get that clarification?
What, what will happen is, when this comes in, it gets referred out to all the other boards. The Board of Health is going to come in, where they're going to, we can get their opinion. We, we don't make these decisions, we listen to all the other boards, and we'll hear what they have to say, and...
Right, okay.
So, so I, so it's clear and unambiguous that, I can't recall tonight exactly where we, where you are. I think you are in a stabilization area, so I didn't want to make a definitive comment, and we did have a brief conversation about a month or so ago. But we'll make sure precisely for the board and where you are, precisely how, where, where the locus is and what implicates it.
And I, I just want to not be up there presenting and have somebody surprise me that it's in a different area and I didn't know, but it's not clearly stated.
Probably should have an engineer with you, and don't come in here alone without knowing that before you come before us.
But knowing if he can answer me, I asked the town planner, and he doesn't know.
Well...
But that's what a professional engineer is for.
I have a professional engineer, and it's not clarified in the regulation. The regulation contains a typo fully written.
All right, well, um...
I don't want to have to pay an engineer to...
Okay.
...introduce a fully written bylaw.
If, if there's a determination under the zoning bylaw that's required, as the board knows, you can ask, we're ruling from the building commissioner. The building commissioner is the bottom line. That decision is appealable to the Board of Appeals and then to a court of competent jurisdiction. My opinion has no standing. So we'll make sure you've had the right, the right guidance from the appropriate officials here to move forward.
All right, okay. And I, I understand this was decision was made before your time, but I do think there's changes in the town. I think that that's maybe part of just one of those decisions that sounded good 15 years ago, but we've only got 200 IA systems since then, and we got 18,000 parcels. So, uh, I think there's new information, doing sewer and doing inlet widening, and even though this may be a 10-year-old decision, it affects my property, my neighbor's properties in perpetuity.
Okay, you'll hear all of them.
Right. But be prepared, we're going to listen to everything, and we're going to have to have projections, everything on the screen, everyone sees this, it'll be, we're starting over again, so we'll be looking at everything anew.
I appreciate it. I'm a professional, I have a professional job, I have no problem making, making screen presentations, I look forward to it.
I understand, because, because all we hear right now is what you're saying. We're going to have to look at it.
I'm glad to do presentations, not a, not a problem for me.
You got it. We'll look...
Thank you. I just wanted to get the right information.
Good luck. We'll start over again.
Thanks.
Make sure we get the... Okay.
Okay.
So that was general correspondence. Now we're going to jump back in the agenda, attendance at the All Island Planning Board Martha's Vineyard Committee meeting. This, what's the, what's the date, Pat? Do you remember?
Oh, God.
Oh, God. Sorry, put you on the spot.
Yeah, because I didn't, I didn't know. Paul had the date, I thought it was the 20, it was the 26th through the 29th of September, and I think it's at 5:00 or 5:30. And I know I sent it all to everybody because...
Well, we've already voted, we're going to do it, right? It's...
I don't think we, there's a vote, and there was a question on the date.
On the date, so we still...
No, Paul gave us the date.
Okay.
So, that was in, it was captured, it was in our last meeting's minutes, but it was you and Paul and potentially myself who were going to go over.
I am interested, and I can make my, I'll, I'll work on making it happen.
Yeah, and I replied to you, and I think it was all attached with all the information on it, it was all part of it.
How do we resolve, I guess we get the date out?
September 26th, thank you.
But we'll be meeting the 27th.
All right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we're, you're, now I guess the question is, are we going there as individuals or a member, or, or, or the board?
As individuals.
So we're going as individuals?
That was all decided.
So we really don't need the board's approval, just want to notice that we're going to do this, okay?
Okay. The board agreed that we wanted to explore how we might jointly understand our problems where they intersect.
Next agenda is future agenda items. Any thoughts?
No, I think I brought up the Witsole Group presentation, that's going to happen at the joint meeting with Conservation.
Well, are we going to have the accessory apartment bylaw on our, all our meetings going forward until it's resolved, or...
You may want to think about, uh, as a future agenda item, actually having a hearing.
Yeah, I think it's time.
And, uh, get it out there. You, you, your hearing is good for six months before your town meeting. So if you had it in October, October, December, or, you're, you just about qualify for the April town meeting. But at least, you might just have to get it out there, and actually have a, have a hearing at this point.
You should probably have it as soon as possible, because the closer you get to town meeting, the people are going to get busy with other things.
Right. Uh, so you're probably looking to advertise it, it wouldn't be until sometime mid-October. Uh, which, I do have one item for future agenda items, too, to look the board to, with your permission. Uh, I'm sorry, to go back to, to the accessory apartment bylaw, you're going to have zoning hearings for a zoning article that's been petitioned by the Board of Selectmen here for design review, to eliminate them, put them into the signed bylaw. That hearing is on the 4th of October. So it might be, if you're going to have zoning hearings on the 4th, you might just want to put it in there. It's not on the warrant, but it can be part of your hearing for October the 4th.
I would like to also, I think it's time to bring forward, um, first discussions of the multifamily bylaw. Should we start discussing that as well?
At, on the 4th?
Well, no, just in a future agenda.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to, like to schedule it.
Okay.
Uh, and because we really should be working on all three areas at the same time, instead of, we're doing it one at a time. I wanted, I wanted to make some progress on the accessory bylaw. I think we're getting there now, and I'd like to bring the other one...
Okay.
Up behind it, not in front, but start the first discussions on that.
That would be fine.
And so maybe it's a month or two months away, but you fit it in.
I think, I think you really want to finalize and come to some sort of conclusion with the accessory. We have it in the can for you? Uh, as you know, you've been working on it in the background, and then, you know, off you go, because it's going to probably take a year or two to do that, too.
I understand, just...
Okay, I will do that.
Starting on it is, is good.
And let me see what I can do about the 4th. Uh, October the 11th, the Cape Cod Commission will be here, that's here Tuesday, October the 11th. They'll be here to discuss with you the David Straits planning study. So I want to alert the board to that, that we're trying to make a non-regulatory night for you, to discuss their findings and suggestions at that time. And at that time, you may just want to, it is a Tuesday night, but perhaps, I know the board has also been, uh, concerned is a better word, has been eager to have the Board of Selectmen join them. So it might be something to bring to their attention that they're coming on, in on the 11th of October.
Make it a joint meeting and appoint a new member.
Uh, you know?
Could be...
Brilliant, brilliant minds think alike. Right, that's ac, exactly what was the thought process then. So October the 11th, the Commissioner will be here, uh, so to go over that important study, so if you can jot that down, it's important, too. That's all I have.
And so I will be announcing, I'm going to be putting in my resignation letter. I guess October 1st would be a good target date, so that we can fill the position, and I'll continue to sit here, at least for the next meeting, and then I don't know if it'll need to be more than that.
I don't think so, Doug. I think the only hearing left for future agendas and whatnot is the Android Plan.
Okay.
If we could bring you forward to the 27th, and make a, you'd have to make a decision